Give us a high-level overview of what's going on and then any questions that we have for her about building, zoning, fire marshal, code enforcement, dishwashing, and refrigerator cleaning. They do it all there.
Yep, that is true. That's what I found out at least.
Welcome to Penfield.
Yes. So, my first time doing this, I learned a lot from the coworkers in the area as far as trying to figure out how to bring out the information that you're looking for and also trying to kind of brag and, you know, bring it into perspective. So, the 2018 Building Department's priorities and goals. The comprehensive plan, as the staff in the town of Penfield, Building Department is to continue to promote and protect the general health, safety, and welfare of the community as we progress into the future socially, physically, and economically with the development of the community. Obviously, with last night's situation, you know, that falls right into place. As far as the providing support to the town boards, we're going to continue to provide support to the town board and the zoning board through our knowledge and experience with the Uniform Fire Prevention Code, Building Code, and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. And I kind of breeze through this, sorry.
No, you don't have to read every word.
Yeah, I do have, as I get further down, I break, yeah. The Building Department's going to continue working with the zoning board to make sure that the minimum of four hours of training is acquired each year through webinars, guest lectures, and other affordable alternatives. The department's also going to ensure zoning board members receive this training to better assist the citizens and have a better insight when making decisions that can affect the function and appearance of the town of Penfield for years to come. To pursue the additional department training, this is a very high priority in the department. It looks like our budget may have been cut a little bit in this area, but I want to make sure that the department's staff has the opportunity to go through ICC, the International Code Council, for some additional training along with FEMA. They have a lot of online training that we can take at a reasonable cost, if not free, and then the New York State Department of, yeah, New York State Department of State. Jeff, David, the fire marshal, he participates, and I will participate with the Monroe County Fire Marshals Association for some additional training. And I find that it's important that with the department's staff, that people are cross-trained so that the department runs smoothly. So, a lot of these training opportunities will be offered out to other employees within the department. As far as personnel, I know it's in the budget for this year already to hire an additional building inspector. I would really like that individual to have some plan review experience because we lost Harold, who had a lot of plan review experience, and we have found that that's hindered our services. So, hopefully, when we do hire that building inspector, they will have that plan review experience. I'd like to continue to maintain the part-time fire inspector. This has been assisting Jeff in making sure that the inspections are running efficiently and accurately to make sure that the higher end of the commercial district is safe with the annual fire inspections. As far as the expense and capital end of it, we do have a new vehicle coming. I was talking to DPW. They said that we have a new vehicle coming in April, May, so that'll help us out when we start getting really busy with some field inspections. But I will be looking at the other vehicles to see if another one is needed to be replaced over the next year or two. The mileage is reasonable on these vehicles, but they get a lot of wear and tear going through the construction sites, a lot of unpaved roads, so the undercarriage is probably taking quite a beating.
In a row.
Yes, yep. As far as IPS and BAS, it's important that the computers are updated on a regular basis. We do have an upgrade coming, I believe it's March, towards the middle of March, end of March. But this is going to be helping the Building Department specifically to maximize our quality and quantity of service out in the field. We had the fire marshal had a job, actually, today where he was asked by the ECD department for a building contact information. He wasn't able to access that on the road. He had to call the office and see if there's any information. So, with the tablets out in the field, that'll be beneficial to the department for timely service. Training and seminars. As far as the building inspectors, I think I spoke about that briefly. The Figure Lakes Building Officials Association is where the building inspectors get most of their training. They have to complete 24 hours of training or maintain their certification. And then the fire marshal, he also has to maintain 24 hours, but he ends up going more through a Monroe County Fire Marshals and Inspection Association. That annual seminar is located locally. It's in the West Webster Fire District, so nice and close, and I believe that's in May. The fire marshal has been attending emergency preparedness training to ensure that the staff has the tools and preparedness for any type of disaster. He did put together the disaster plan this year, and he rolled it out to each of the department in the town. Had evacuation drills that went very smoothly, so he put a lot of hard work into that.
So, the first evacuation drill that I've been part of since I've been here.
Oh, wow.
Likewise.
So, we have changed that, and that will be more regularly, at least a couple of opportunities during the course of the year, so.
Really? Likewise?
Yes.
Is it like never then? Probably never here?
We've never. In my lifetime here.
I had one situation where we had a defective smoke detector or something in an alarm panel, and that was it. So, we're back on track to do some more regular. It worked out well, actually, because we had a whole, I shouldn't say a whole bunch. We had a number of guests, visitors that were here at the time, and it was good to see our people make sure that they knew what was going on, got them out, you know, turn it around, you know, get everybody back in. But it was long overdue, so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. As far as attending self-improvement seminars and other training, Fred Prior seminars, I've experienced these in the past. I found them very beneficial. The clerks, both Christine and Catherine, did recently attend a Fred Prior seminar. They had the same feedback that I did when I attended them, so I'd like to move forward and make sure that those are attended. Again, they're local. They're at a reasonable price, so we'll take advantage of those. And then Town of Penfield Disaster Plan, Jeff has been putting a lot of time into that to make sure that the books are updated, and each of the town buildings has the up-to-date manual. Town code changes, working with the town clerk to make sure the Penfield Town Code is current, up-to-date, and consistent with the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. Make sure we're consistent. We're all on the same page when it comes to that. Design criteria, working with the engineering department with the update of the town's design criteria and bringing current revisions to ensure infrastructure and facilities are properly maintained and constructed. I know that there's been topics about fire hydrant stakes and whether to put that into a design criteria for the developments going up in the area instead of the DPW supplying those stakes that, you know, they either get ripped down or, you know, you don't want somebody to get hurt on those. Going into the 2017 accomplishments, the crew that I work with has been very helpful and patting me on the back. They say that I have, you know, I've done wonders, but, you know, numbers speak better than what I could ever say. So, the concerns and complaints, that was at the top of my list because when I first came in, there seemed to be a couple concerns. I don't really like to call them complaints. There's concerns from the residents. So, that was my main focus when I first came in, and I did a little research. In between the years 2012 and 2017, there was 1,000 concerns. 812 were resolved, and then for the year 2017, there were 364 closed out. 240 of them were closed out since August when I started. So, I really kind of dove in and had the crew help me out with some of those. There was 960 permits that were applied for, and on average, 38 building construction inspections are completed, just shy of 2,000. Completion of 230 annual safety inspections, that's on the fire marshal's end of it. 457 certificate of occupancy and certificate of compliance were completed in 2017. New mapping scanner, that was another one. As soon as I walked in the door, somebody was talking about this mapping scanner tool, and I'm like, okay, give me a copier. But the mapping scanner has worked wonders from the old one. I had a little bit of experience with the old one, but this new one is definitely state-of-the-art, and it's worked out well. Laptops are distributed to the zoning board members. I believe that was just a couple weeks ago. Working a couple bums out is, you know, any new technology you're going to work through, but that's worked out well. Bring this up to the current. New pickup truck, talked about that. Expected to be delivered in early spring this year. Utilization of technology by adopted inspection scheduling program, that comes with the IPS update because I was able to, still working out of a tablet, like a, not a computer tablet, but a paper appointment book for inspections, and I just, I found that that was inefficient. So, we ended up using the IPS to schedule a lot of the building inspections. And then with the three building inspectors, we're able to add, there's a lot more room on the computer end of it than it was on the paper form.
So, I remember they were talking, the guys, when they're out in the field, they wanted to have some sort of tablet so they could write it all down.
Yep.
No, that's what you're saying, right?
A little bit of both. So, the tablets are going to, we should be getting those, I believe, in the March. That's going to roll out with the IPS, BAS update. Those are the tablets that they're talking about, that they want those in the field so that they can provide the information right at the field. What I'm talking about is more like an appointment book. The clerks had an appointment book that they were working out of, so you get a phone call, and they would write down the appointments in the book. We got rid of the paper book. There's no more paper. We'll go right to the computer and put them all in there. So, then the building inspectors, when they walk in in the morning, they're grabbing their carbon copies, and they're also looking, they were looking at the appointment book. Now, they don't have to do that. They grab their inspection sheets. Now, they go right to the computer, look at what the inspection is for, and while they're on the computer, they get a little history of, you know, what inspections were already completed and, you know, kind of jog their memory of, you know, what they were out there for recently.
All right, that's awesome.
Consolidating permit application information. Been working with Mr. Renner in regards to making sure that the websites are updated with the consistent information as long as the, along with the pamphlets that we hand out at the Building Department. Checklist for residential and commercial plan reviews. I've been reaching out to a couple different networking people, trying to get a list of plan review. Again, I talked about how this next building inspector with the plan review experience would be helpful in the department, but in the interim, I've reached out and looking for checklists. So, we have these checklists that we can go through and check off as we're doing the commercial plan review. We've answered several FOIA requests from the town clerks. Get pretty good at that. I used to do that at my other job. Provide support to many Town of Penfield entities and several surrounding emergency agencies. That's more like on the fire marshal's end of it. He ends up going to a lot of the emergency management ends of it to provide those support. There is one that you don't have on your list. It came up as I was thinking about this. Christine is a notary, so she maintains the certification. She served about 130 residents last year. Completed and effectively submitted end-of-the-year state reports. I had a 1203 report that I had to submit by the end of February, and the Rochester Home Builders Association, those have all been completed. The building inspectors and the code enforcement officers, along with the fire marshal, have completed their 24 hours of required in-service training. All the staff remains current on their defensive driving and their first aid, CPR, and AED. I think I'm the only one in the department that holds a higher classification. I'm an EMT out of the department.
So, if any of you guys go down, make sure it's someplace where Heidi is.
With an AED.
Call 911.
What's your cell number?
Fire Marshal David, like we talked about, he's working on the emergency action plan. That was what the terminology is for when he does the drills. And then the staff represents the Building Department while attending numerous meetings, the town board, Town of Penfield PRC meetings. Jeff is the vice president for the Monroe County Fire Marshals Association. And then Jeff and I have also set up meetings. We've met with the Penfield Fire District, and I've met with the West Webster Fire District so far, and we're going to be looking to meet with the Webster Fire District to open up the communications between the agencies to make sure there's no confusion. And then along with Finger Lakes, Andy Cebegas, I don't know if he's treasurer, but he holds some kind of a position with the BOLA. And then the Town of Safety, Penfield, the Safety Committee Jeff and I go sit on currently. I do have a couple graphs. Again, sorry, didn't actually conclude that with the original. These graphs are going to show you the comparison. The first one's going to show you the comparison between 2016 and 2017 permit applications. It shows you that the largest increase is in August, and then the largest decrease is in December. And then the third page is going to show you the four building inspection topics regularly completed in 2017. I just picked four because if I went through all follows them, it would have been a little overkill on the sheet. And then the fourth page is for the most popular permits issued in 2017.
Operational permits means?
That they got their CVO, and they can operate the facility.
Questions, comments for Heidi? Tina's cranked out a lot of good things this year and really, really has done a lot to what I'll call get caught up in some things, close out to some things, get some good training done to support the employees. And I think they've streamlined a bit, you know, some of the workflow that they have upstairs. I think that, I think the tablets that they'll come in, they'll make a very important part of that overall. You know, a little bit duplicate work, write your notes, come in, put it in the computer, and put it right on the tablet, and then just download it to the computer. You know, so some benefit there, so. All right?
Yeah, very good.
Questions, comments? All right. We know that you have another commitment, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And we'll have another, another great year.
Perfect. Nice meeting, everybody.
All right. Heidi, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to Mr. Renner.
All righty. So, starting off with 2017 accomplishments to just highlight some of the big ones that we work with other departments. Independence Day, we continue to take a more active role with recreation, assisting with the parade and operations for that. Memorial Day as well. Meeting coverage in 2017, 16 rolling into 17. As you can imagine, with some of the subject matters, we've seen an increase in both the meeting coverage for the number as well as the length of those meetings. Of course, in 2017, we started off the year on a wonderful note with a windstorm and then a snowstorm, and we had an active role with the disaster and helping to manage that. And we've also assisted with a number of press conferences. Automation playback system has been one that's kind of rolled through a couple of years here, but we're happy to report that has been completed, both the physical installation as well as the configurations. And as part of that, we were able also to complete the Roku app for the overtop delivery for both the live streaming and video on demand. And we're seeing, without us really promoting it, we're starting to see an increased use of that. Website, we did take and renew our hosting contract with the current vendor, Blue Tower, that does our hosting for all of our websites. And then our ongoing maintenance and improvements continue on a daily basis. Shared services, we have an active engagement with the Town of Aranacoyt through loaning of equipment. Also assisted them with the upgrade and dedication to replacing their broken equipment that they had and helping through that process. And Penfield Central School District approached us, and we're currently actively continuing to loan them a few items, but we've also been providing guidance to them and design and physical installation assistance.
And they've loaned us some items as well.
They have. It has been a very good growing partnership that works both ways, and we've really opened up that door.
Dave, real quickly, when you talk about Aranacoyt and any work that you and your staff does for an outside entity such as Aranacoyt, we're getting reimbursed for that, right?
So, what we tend to do is we tend to put together like an intermunicipal agreement of sorts, Andy, and it ends up being a give-and-take, if you will. So, at the end of the, at the end of the day, you know, as Dave and I have our updates, at the end of the day, what we've spent or what we've received pretty much balances out overall. So, it saves us, you know, the potential from having maybe to purchase something, or it may save us some labor time, you know, if Nate comes over and helps us with some programming, you know, or some assistance if we got a big project going on. So, for the most part, it really ends up being a wash, if you will, at the end, but both entities benefit from that.
Going into 2018, priorities here. Internet accessibility and communication services can be broken down into several parts. The website, of course, and with that, we are actively working on an RFP to review the current website and identify paths moving forward. The site service review is going to be a part of that, and it's both an internal as well as an external through a third party. And the document management system, a DMS, will play a major role in efficiencies gained and also accessibility to content and speed of that content.
Is all that together, Dave, sort of not only backend, but also cosmetic?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we're really looking at a redesign, but when you look at what we have for internet services, it's taking a, it's taking a look at everything. Library, recreation, town, cable, documents, video services, social media. It's a little bit larger than for us just to say, hey, it's just a big redesign. We need to make sure that these are going to communicate, work together. So, if we're doing an alert or closings or sharing of information on one site, we don't need to rekey it. We need it to be automated to pass on. So, we have some uniqueness to it that doesn't allow us to basically go through a vendor to get something that's kind of off the shelf for a single organization. We're really looking at a redesign for them.
And if I could just interject here, the document management system, we started last year looking at some different vendors. We took a group this last Friday. We took a group out to Toshiba and spent a couple hours out there. Dave was there, town clerk representative, Lisa Grosser, and HR and DPW, just to take a look at that. How could that work? How could that fit in? How could it help our workflow and some things like that? The document management system that, you know, looking at attempting to do something, you know, kind of a, you know, an umbrella that would cover the town. Now, whether every department would participate, I guess, remains to be seen. So, we're just in the process, starting to vet some of that out overall.
It'll play a major role because that's probably about 80% of the content that's coming at us is in a document form. Social media, a topic that comes and goes is depending on what social media platform you utilize, but we do look at that and continuing, at least at first glance, is to move forward with promotion back to the website. Continue to drive traffic back is the goal. But as we look at a retool and a redesign, we're looking at being able to integrate more interactivities with that for sharing of content. Video delivery, continuing to expand on over the top is to look at Apple TV and to expand the video on demand in that area as well. Cable franchise is one that has kind of carried on with us here for a number of years, and it's going to probably stick around for a while as we go through change out here between Time Warner and Spectrum and the constant change of technology that's in front of us and the work that we're doing between our attorney as well as the co-on-law group. Partnerships, we continue to look at the aspect of continuing the partnerships we have made as they continue to work in unison with our department of assisting, but also look at opportunities to gain in partnerships. Identify changes in resources and the personnel. The department responsibility and workload continues to increase, and we would like to have that discussion about increasing the staff to help with those additional responsibilities and that increasing workload. Expensive capital funding, the studio light grid, looking to replace that. That was originally purchased in 1988 and is questionable as far as its fire safety goes at this point. Internet and multimedia communication systems and services, we'll continue with hosting, establishing contract services for the website evaluation and a rebuild in accordance to the existing standards and regulations. Cable TV franchise renewal, specialized support, outside vendor contractors to assist as needed with website facilitating, facility engineering, IT support, both legal team fees for TV franchise renewal. Ongoing specialized training, we'll continue to work with Society of Broadcasting Engineers and the local chapters for our staff that's involved with the video side, and continue to advance our knowledge of office products as opportunities become available for training. We do encourage cross-training between departments as available. We have a little opportunity to do that with some areas of the website, and we're really, we're really focused on like documents, trying to reduce our workload by training other staff members as far as what we require for the content before it gets to our office. So, that way it expedites it to getting online.
So, you start, you know, started to see that. So, if you take a look at the planning board agenda, zoning board agenda, town board, trails committee, all that, we've tried to make it the same, same format. Just makes it a lot, a lot less handling that personal touch to it versus just being able to grab it and, you know, kind of put it into play.
Major projects going forward, internet services and technologies. We continue to work with all departments, media AV, all departments. Recreation for Independence Day, Memorial Day, and amphitheater events. Archiving to include the use of the document management system for documents both in-house and online, and continue to research if we can utilize that also for other types of documents such as media-type formats, videos, photos. And then the data network for both facilities and synergy for IT side. From some of the previous meetings that you've had with other staff members, there were some questions that came from those. I just kind of jotted down and wanted to give you some responses to it. And one of those questions was, what's the plan with the website? You know, is there a plan? And I think I hopefully identified.
Yes.
Identified that. We're working with that RFP. That's kind of a lengthy process because we're trying to drill down through each of the websites and bring that into a document so we can accurately present that to potential clients that could bid on that.
Is there a timetable date? Is that something that you're looking for? Spring, summer, fall?
I would like to have said that we are already there, but of course, internally, we've been working on some other major projects that have come forth in our community.
Sure.
Kind of stolen some time.
Dave.
I know, I know.
Clean slate, starting today, so.
Yep, clean slate, starting today. If we get out of the bunker.
Probably starting in April.
Okay.
Probably starting in April.
If we, if we get out of the bunker successfully, I would like to say by the end of second quarter that we have an RFP that has been through this board, that you've reviewed it. We've had some dialogue and that you have approved to move forward, that we're advertising.
Is this looking at the Penfield Recreation one too?
This is looking at all. This is going to be rec, cable, and this is town, library, and potentially even Penfield Players. Anything that is hosted on our server, we're looking at.
Well, I like the comprehensive approach to it. So I would just say, if you need the extra week, take the extra week to make sure that we've got it how we want it because I think, you know, I've been, not critical, but I've been saying for many years that I think that it can be more user-friendly, even though it has tremendous content and is recognized almost every year for its content and the information on there. I do think that it can be a little bit cleaner as well as from the backend, all the coding you guys have to do. It'd probably be a little easier on the efficiency side. So let's take a good swing at this, but get it right.
So the way I'm drafting the RFP is it's going to be in a two-part session. First one is going to be, first phase is really to drill down through it and work with the vendor to get their input and make sure we're meeting current standards, what things are unique and what we can have to then retool.
Right.
And present that for going into phase two. And we may have to go back out and rebid at that point, but we'll take our advice as it comes. But we're going to look at this originally as a two-part process, but then we decided to do one RFP and see what we get out of that to tool us to lead into the next one. So from a budgetary standpoint, I would imagine going into 2019, we'll probably be looking at budgeting some dollars if we have enough. As we've done great, but we may need to add a little bit to that as we go into the rebuild phase.
Okay.
Social media. There was conversations in regards to the timing, expediting information, trying to get that out there. At this time, we want to continue, again, as I said, to drive traffic to the website. That's where our resources are. We do not want to duplicate the content that we're putting out on the website to the social media because the traffic sits in social media, it's not coming back to the website. But one of the goals here will be through the renewal process of looking at the website is to build more interactivities so that way a user who's coming into the site could then share content found back to social media and amongst their communication channels to help generate traffic in return back to the site. Vulnerabilities, things that we could do better. First and foremost, ADA. So as we look at websites today, it's something that many don't think about, but this is one of the areas that is very concerning to us with the aspect to links and documents. Documents have to be OCR'd, optical character recognition. That is important for somebody who has a visual impairment so that they can read the document and have the computer read it back to them. So we can't just scan a document and stick it up there as an image file. It's got to have some backend metadata with it so that way that information can be read to them. We need to improve upon what we're doing. You can do very good with it due to the fact that we are a clearinghouse in our department for everything that comes through. We make sure it's meeting those requirements before it goes out.
Would that be something in that plan, that comprehensive plan for the website?
That is a major player in this that we have to make.
Like they put the costs in and stuff?
It's really the retooling and the aspect of it, but that's also going to come into a major role with the document management system as far as how that happens. But that's also why at this time and probably even going forward, we do not want to have a whole bunch of cooks, if you will, in the kitchen. We've got to keep some continuity with this and make sure we're following proper procedures so that way we don't end up, you know, blocking content from constituencies. You know, we want to make sure we can be fully accessible by all. There's more transportation or transparency opportunities to go forward. A lot of times we take reports and data numbers and we put it out in just a PDF form. One of those efforts in improving upon transparency is to potentially put that out in raw data form. So that way information can be collected, people can then manipulate data and draw their own conclusions from that. We've seen that in a number of other government access or government public access points where they're coming in and being able to pull that content, review it, look at it, and make their own reports out of it. Document management again, and then improve on the mobility. I think this is one of the areas for mobile devices. It still hasn't become a breakpoint where we're in that teeter position.
Do you want a Penfield app?
No, I do not want a Penfield app because I don't see a use for a Penfield app.
But Aron Akoi has one, right? A couple times.
They do, but what is an app doing for you is the question that I have for you. How are you going to use an app? An app is good if you're delivering information out one way, but you have a website that is mobile capable with HTML5. So it can be read and viewed already on your mobile device. So there's no need for an app. If you are going to tie in permitting systems, report services for reporting a pothole, a light out, traffic, and we're going to get into a two-way conversation with people, we're going to start collecting data, then we can look at it. But I think for today, for what we are currently doing online, we stick with what we know, and that's to get through the fact of doing a site revaluation, rebuild, and then move forward with that. If we determine in that process that an app has benefit, then we can build that into the picture. But I'm only looking at to improve upon the experience today as far as what the visual impact is and how the site comes up. And that's for all the sites that we utilize. One of the other areas that I will, I find is kind of a difficult area, is that a number of departments, right or wrong, we've gone out and we have contracted with third-party vendors, be that Ecode 360, GIS, RecTrap, you name it, whatever we're using, they're not following the same style sheets. Those are projects that were in those departments and went out and had no conversations in with what we're doing with the current site. And that's going to be a major element as we go through this process, is looking at what deficiencies those systems have and how do those get built back into the current systems and ensuring that those vendors are meeting our style sheet requirements for those sites to be read. So the branding is an issue, and we talk about visitation to the sites. One of the things that we've seen is that the site visitation continues to drop. And a lot of that is the entry point is not the front page anymore. The entry point is to a page of specific content. Somebody's bookmarked that page. They go directly there. They're bypassing the homepage. We see that even further when you start talking about these third-party services. They end up leaving the website to go to this third-party service, and then from that standpoint, they've bookmarked that service. They never touched the website ever. At that point, they go straight there. And we need to look at taking those services and bringing them back in and wrapping them back under the umbrella of the website. So that way, if we're doing emergency alerts and we have this news and content, people have to have that exposure and we have to work with those vendors to get some overlaps in there. So that would be the vulnerabilities and areas that we can do better in.
Good. Very comprehensive, Dave.
Questions, comments, thoughts, ideas, additional information, kicking the shins?
No, I just, I mean, we've talked about it before and I've said it constantly at these meetings and other meetings, particularly at our annual budget meetings, that I think the town's website is far superior to other municipality websites. We've got 19, 20 towns in Monroe County and the city of Rochester, and certainly our site, and this is a credit to you, Dave, and your team for doing this, has been acknowledged. And, you know, the Democrat and Chronicle Sunshine Week is one of the best sites in this community. And, you know, I've had people tell me and compliment the town on the amount of information that's on that site. And I think that we are very transparent in trying to provide as much information as we can. And so if somebody goes and looks at some of the other town sites or, you know, things like that, I think they will find very quickly how robust our site is with information provided to the residents versus other sites. And so I thank you and your team for your efforts in continuing to maintain that amount of attention to openness and transparency through the town website. So thank you.
I appreciate it. I'm just, the clearinghouse, it's really every employee within the town who is taking the opportunity to keep their eyes on their content. They're the content experts of their areas. It really resolves back to them to be able to keep that going and keeping it fed down to us because we're a little over 300 pages deep and I cannot monitor all of them. As far as documents go, we're well over 7,000 documents online.
So I agree.
It's a work in progress all the time.
And I am aware of two towns in particular that are watching our website very closely and they're trying to basically copy what we're doing onto their website.
You can't just do that. It takes a lot of time.
I know, but, I mean, it will take time, but, you know, they're acknowledging the fact that they're trying to be as good as the town of Penfield's website. So I think that is a credit to you and your team and a credit to the supervisor for having that site, that forward-thinking site, and trying to maintain a website that is useful to the residents of Penfield.
Appreciate it. We've been having conversations with a couple of municipalities south of us.
Yep.
In regards to how we handle social media and the content, as well as how we utilize social media, internet back to our public meetings.
Right.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, the 7,000 documents that we have online does not include the library?
No. Have the library? No.
No, no, I meant, it's like a library.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to, I apologize if I misunderstood. I just wanted to make sure you understood that that's us.
And that's the only reason why I keep pushing on.
Because they're connected to Monroe County.
Right.
Right. I just want to emphasize how important a proper, I'm going to use the key word, a proper document management system is to making this successful for us for both an internal as well as an external to share content, given the amount of content that is flipping. So you get an agenda, an agenda then goes up, posted, and if there's a modification, it gets reposted and then possibly reposted. Then you have a document replacing that for decisions for what was voted on, and then we got the minutes. So that one link could have four generations of documents behind it that we're clearing out every meeting for every board. So that's where we just kind of look at and really emphasize that DMZ is really something.
Okay. All right. Any other questions to Dave? All right. David, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next guest tonight is Charlie. Charlie, want to come up? Oh, that's not Charlie, that's Camden, sorry. We'll go with our text receiver. Come right up, Camden. Thanks for joining us, buddy.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'll be getting out of here in a blink of an eye.
Wow. Depends. Depends. Now it's a challenge. Yeah. So go right ahead.
Well, I'm actually going to start just by saying something that every year when we do this, I wreck my brains because my department has one responsibility. And we focus all of our time around that. So to add a lot of things to my department sometimes is rather difficult. And we have covered so many areas in the last 10 years since I've been here that we are right now at a point where everything is good, everything is calm, everything is streamlined. So that's why I was going to tell you, this is going to be very simple because there isn't a lot to add because we've done everything that we can within our means right now until software and programs start to change, and then our minds will change.
They have more goals.
Yes. So I'm just, right now, my goal is just to get through this tax season. So what I've noted on here under my goals and priorities for this beginning is we continue to work with the option for our residents who arrive with checks unwritten. This is something that just started in the last year because we have so many people that approach the desk with checks unwritten, and then we get a congestion of people all piled up at the counter. And what we did is we had a desk or a table added to the rotunda, but then we had residents complaining that they can't see. The lighting is bad. I know that they've done something to change the lights up above and the actual chandelier, but there's still a problem with lighting. I'm not really sure how we're going to approach that, but I'm hoping.
Put a table lamp on the, something like that.
Something, yeah.
Minor's caps.
There you go. That'd be good, too.
So something.
Armed chairs out there, standing there.
So that is one thing that we're trying to do, and maybe if we make it a little easier for residents, they'll be more encouraged to take a moment, sit down, write your check because when they come up and they stand there, then the people behind them get very frustrated, especially when we dealt with the 900-plus people on the 29th. So that was tough. Also, what I'm trying to do, and this is something I've just started to put into place, we print in my department on many reports, just on a daily, weekly basis. The reports range anywhere from seven pages to it could be 100 pages. I am now taking these reports, instead of piling up papers, saving them as PDFs. In my system, I print the one page that I need. I'm keeping them until I'm done with them because there are only certain ones that I really need to keep. I don't have to, because they're reports you can re-pull up again in the future. So I'm trying to find a way to save on all the paper and all the boxes of papers that we have to store and printing by now printing them but saving as PDFs in my system and only pull out what we need. Next is just, this is something we continue to work on and we haven't gotten it just right yet because we still get phone calls, is our snowbirds, all of our travelers during the winter season. We seem to miss them. We don't know when they're leaving. So you send it to their local address and then it gets held or it gets forwarded or back and forth, and they're missing their request. So they go to Florida and then they wonder where their bill is. So we're now going to try to start sending them out reminders two times a year to let them know. If you're traveling, we need to know now. We don't want them to wait until they're already off to Florida because then they don't get the letter. And we don't necessarily have their new Florida residence because they don't always stay in the same place. Some of them are renters and they move out. So those are the three things that I have on top. The other.
Just out of curiosity, have you been tracking that information over the last few years?
Tracking those birds' migration?
Yeah, I mean, to some degree, the onus falls on the resident.
I know.
So I'm just trying to figure out, we can't keep chasing them every year, so I'm just curious.
We don't. We have regulars, and we have a folder that we keep of them. And we've gotten to a point now where now we're asking them, do you have a computer? Can we email this to you? Some of them say, yes, I have a computer, but I don't have a printer. So they travel with a laptop, but then they can't print the bill. That's why they still physically want a paper copy sent to them. So we do let them know that if we can email it to them, we will to save on that. Again, more mail, but usually the case is that they want a paper copy in their hand. And it's part of this service, part of our customer service and what we do.
I understand, but how early can you prepare that information?
Well, we need to know before the bills are printed. And our cutoff is the first week of December, for instance, for the town and county bills. So we send these out prior to Thanksgiving. We normally get a response back. And we'll say, please respond by mail or email. And they can let us know, yes, this is where we're living, this is where we want the bill to go to this tax season. And then what we can do is we can code the bill so it will stop it from going to their home, and the bill will come directly to our office instead from the printer. And then we have it coded a certain way to know, okay, this is a snowbird, their address is in this folder. We have a special code form. So we try to do that to eliminate having to print a whole other bill and also for it to go to their home because some of the tax bills were not forwarded. They will go and sit somewhere and then get kicked back to us. Beyond that, we're just, I know we've been discussing security cameras. I know that's still in discussion.
I see that. I guess my question is, I've never really thought about it, the security cameras in this building or the town facilities, but is that something for more of a lengthy conversation at some future meeting?
So we've started the process. So we have cameras in the hallways at Recreation. We've got cameras on the east and west doors coming in here so that we can see what's going on. going on. We've got a couple of cameras at DBW, one watching our gas pumps and the other one watching the back lots. So, that was a 2017 initiative, so the backbone, if you went, if you will, went in, that was kind of a, a large expenditure. And then from there, now we're starting to build out. So, in 2018, we'll be adding more cameras here. And we'll start, and we've started to, you know, from a prioritization as we go through. So, we've got, I think today, I think we have six or seven cameras currently on the system, and we'll be adding more.
Okay.
So.
Did you want me to continue with the next part?
Keep right on, keep right, keep right on going. I've got Peaches in the, in the audience there that I gotta get home and get her beauty rest.
Okay. And Section 2, um, identifying changed resources, basically under expense and capital funding are just some of these other items. Adding the new security cameras was under that. I, I did note things in regards to our office about just the tax office in need of some update with painting, and we have cracked walls, adore that. Um, I know this has been in the works for about 10 years, so we're just, I, I'm just wondering, you know, if that's something that's going to be lined up soon, only because we're in the eye of the public.
Right.
You know, we, we serve thousands of people at our window and we like it to be presentable. The carpets also are in need of cleaning. The windows, I believe they get, they used to get washed every spring, they did take care of our, our Venetian blinds finally though, so those are nice and clean. But, I knew that, it was discussed a year or so ago when they came in to look at it, but I believe when the updating was done with the grant for ports, it got pushed next online, and then they went downstairs and did PC TV and we got pushed again against the law. So, I'm just going to keep on trying for all of us to see if they'll get in there and do that painting for us. Right now we have nothing in regards to anything with the computer technical training or systems, nothing with that, because nothing is updated, nothing has changed, our programs are all the same. If we have anything that happens like that is usually done within the Monroe County Treasury and they handle that. We, I did make a suggestion in regards to, right now I have a privacy partition in front of my desk. Um, I believe we put a request into Jimmy to see if it's something that can be done that is something that's already within the town facilities that they can reuse, only because the view from the outside of the office and seeing all of the clutter and stuff on our net desks when we have piles of papers or when we're handling deposits and things like that, we're trying to see if they have extra ones. I think they have them upstairs in the billing department, they have them in all the other departments, and our department does not have them. Just, again, trying to make things look a little bit more streamlined and clean to the eye of the resident when they come to our windows. And then it brings me down to our accomplishments. And number one was really our parking funds, which was great that those were put into place. And we did get the table in the rotunda area, we're just working on the lighting, so it's no big expenditures or anything needed or.
Okay.
I'm open to questions if you have any questions or even suggestions.
Questions, comments for Peggy?
No, it's clear, simple, like you said. Good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Peggy, thank you.
I just.
Appreciate it.
I try to make mine simple so now when Amy comes up.
My whole five minutes.
All right. Well, travel safe home.
Thank you.
And we move on, last but not least, we move on to our town clerk.
So, um, obviously the number one priority I have continuously to give great customer service 24/7, do my home visits for those who need notary, helping people with their handicap hangers to trade them out, not make them come into the, the town hall if they can't, that kind of thing. But, customer service is the key and we continue to give really good customer service, above and beyond is what we try to do, my whole team. Records management project, very, very big part of our efforts in the town clerk's office. We constantly review, monitor, and organize the vaulted records, making sure everything is properly storaged. We've been really organizing it really, really well in the last year or so, and also right on top of records to be destroyed within the MU1 timeframe. And we have discovered there's been a number of, quite a few actually, records that have been stored that really only needed to be stored for about six years, but for some reason had been earmarked for 20 years and yet. So, with that effort that we've been doing, especially with some of our interns in the past, we begin to have more space in the vault, which could bring us towards, at that point, implementing the efficient high-density mobile shelving for our record storage facility, which is, brings safety to our staff and helps with.
Excuse me, gentlemen, if you want to chat, go out of the room. If you want to sit and listen, we'd welcome that. Thank you very much. Okay, continue please.
Okay. So, uh, so that's just something that we will constantly do, continue with, a project that's ongoing. This year, I'm going to be researching automation handling of FOIL requests. Obviously, every day we get FOIL requests, public disclosure requests, and an automated system, which I have been researching, and also when the New York State Town Clerk Association conference comes up, I have some scheduled meetings with some, some vendors where it will help increase our data volumes and also provide automated redaction so that it reduces staff time and ensures compliance with the law. So, that will be a big part of this year's efforts. Again, I will continue looking into different FOIL tracker programs. That was one of my goals last year, but it's a continuing effort because the, they keep updating the different trackers. So, I want to, I want to have us purchase something that's going to become outdated right away. So, that's something that I'm still looking into, making sure that it's a best cost-effective I've been working with the DMV office, I was actually a little disappointed it hasn't happened yet, but, um, we have a lot of foot traffic comes into our office on DMV, mobile DMV day, where people come in asking for copies of their insurance cards, driver's licenses, they'll email it. So, if you remember last year, they were faxing them to us and it was difficult and costing much more money. Now we have them email it to us, we still charge them for the paper that we print out, but, um, we want to eliminate that foot traffic which has become quite cumbersome and just making our staff interrupt their daily business. So, working with the DMV office, they are purchasing their own county computers and copiers, so they'll be able to take care of that effort there and not send all the people down to our office. This year, I am just, again, uh, taking care of getting, having us have less polling sites. And so, we will be discontinuing the use of the Penfield High School for safety reasons and, of course, in light of what has just happened in Florida, it just seems like it would be a better effort not to have people coming through that office, not to mention that we do every year during election time, I work closely with the high school principal in getting emergency efforts together in case there's bomb scares and, and fire drills or whatever, and how we would have to move all of our election districts out and move it to the rec center. So, you know, I want to eliminate that extra work and extra issue. So, um, we will no longer be using the high school, and they had two election districts in there, one and two, we're going to move, I mean, I'm sorry, one and 21, we're going to move the election district 21 over to the Penfield Community Center. They have the space. And then, election district number one is going to go over, we're going to use it for the first time in 10 years, the American Legion Braveman Post 1229. So, that's going to have election district number one. Also, I'm going to be discontinuing the use of the Harper Park Lodge. I'm working with the Board of Elections to have absentee ballots brought in for the people that live over there that have trouble with transportation. We're also going to be looking in effort, with an effort along with the Board of Elections to possibly get people driven to their polling sites. But, we're getting rid of Harper Park Lodge. There were also some safety issues we had last year, excuse me, so that's election district eight, we're moving it, that one as well, to American Legion Braveman Post. So, there will be two election districts now in the Braveman Post. They're very excited to have us there. And another beauty is saving taxpayer money because Harper did charge us for the use and Braveman Post will not be. So, I, I think I'll just mention one other item because I know you've got to start your meeting, but, so, last year we added, at the end of the year, I added American Express credit card to the list of credit cards that we have. We're already using Visa, MasterCard, and Discover, which we started in 2010, and that's for all transactions. And I successfully added American Express to our online dog license renewal transactions at the end of last year. And now we would like to add American Express credit card to the, for all of our transactions, so we've been working on that. Um, do you want, is that good?
I think it's good. Board, questions, comments, additional information you'd like to see from the town clerk?
No, the only question I have, Amy, is I know that you've, you've been doing the passport nights now two times a year for at least 10 years.
We were doing it actually three, four times a year, then three, three times.
So, I guess maybe that answers my, are the numbers still pretty good for each time that you have?
So, certainly it's not like when we first started.
Right.
However, our last time, we had 30, and I think that's a pretty good number, and we get calls all the time where people are saying, "When's your next passport night?" And typically what I tell them is that if it's not, no, we do have our next passport night coming up in April, on April 5th. We'll do some PR on that and make, and we've been telling people who've been calling in. Typically, I help out some of our other town clerks, particularly Harrington and Pittsburgh, who do have an ongoing effort that goes, you know, every day. And so, if we're unable to do it, I do suggest that so that they can have the opportunity.
Can you talk to, with the county clerk's office about, you know, they're pushing us real, the real ID, the driver's license that we're all supposed to have, you know, to get over to the, on the planes after 2020, I guess. You know, that could be something that one could do at a passport night, you know?
So, I have.
Because a lot of people are going to be.
So, I have talked to the, I have talked to them, the county clerk's office, about that, and, uh, they will do that with us. However, they want to do it closer to the time when they're actually putting that in force.
In a couple of years.
Yes.
That'd be good because a lot of people are going to be anxious when that starts rolling around.
And then we'll, you know, I imagine we'll add another passport night and have more than the, the normal that we have and advertise, well, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Go home and get some rest.
Bless them.
Great job yesterday.
Thank you, thank you. It was quite the, quite a surprise and continuous flow, but it was.
The surprise always.
Good. It was, it was, the numbers were great. We were pleased that people came out to vote.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Terrific. We'll pause for a 30-second commercial break. We'll get those folks that are in the hall, uh, into the, into the room. We'll get staff to the table, we'll get our clerk to the table, and we'll get ready to get fired up.
Do you have any experience? I always do. You usually are prepared.
I know.
When I, I don't know why. PC, AV, get ready, we'll do roughly about a 15-second countdown and then we'll be ready to go live for the work session.
I can't tell, it'll have a TV on or whatever. Can't tell.
I will officially call the February 28th, 2018 work session to order. We'll let the minister reflect that Councilwoman Messler is out for business reasons this evening. Mr. Moore was with us, he'll be right back, he's taking care of a, of a small family emergency. And we will first recognize that we have the January 24th minutes before us, 2018, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. See no discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that is taken care of. Monthly reports, I think for the most part, monthly reports are in pretty good shape for the month of January, so through January, not looking into February, so thank you, staff, for that. This evening we have no public hearings, we do have one guest, and Mr. Ante Tomaso, this is Watersong, sidewalk waiver request. Mr. Valentine, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Had Mr. Ante Tomaso come into PRC, and we've been working with them on Section 5, their latest section of development, and they approached us about a request for a sidewalk waiver. John prepared a sketch here, kind of showing the development as it's done, you can see, and he can kind of run through the different sections of what it is, and then showing where they're looking to ask for a waiver from, we have both sides to do it on, on one side. John, if you want to kind of run through the sections.
Sure, thank you. Good time tonight. John Mika, who is the developer here representing RMJ Land Group. As you know, we originally purchased this property from another developer that was all approved at the time, and the first phase was in, going back a little bit here, and they had sidewalks on both sides of the street, and we continue to do that, but over the years, it just, you know, I, of course, am there a lot, John's there a lot, and it just tends to, to be that a lot of people, without it being plowed in the winter, it's difficult on the sidewalks, but also during the summer, people walk in the street with their dog or whatever all the time. So, all the new developments that have been approved through the years here have all been either one side of the street that we've noticed, and it's very expensive to do each lot individually. So, since we have it in place at this point, we're looking at, trying to see if we can do the inside ring and continue all that, which I marked up, Mark told me to just mark it up, so I apologize, it's not a little bit more formal, but, um, doing that, and then we are, of course, have to, doing the rest of the five-mile line sidewalk as well from the last lot to the other, other house that's there, on, you know, within this next thing, and then just trying to do again, eliminate the outside ring, but try to continue to do the inside ring as we go along or as we, as we've been doing it. So, that's why, you know, we're here. So, if you have any questions or...
So, a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, first I'll go for Mark and then I'll go for you, John. Mark, PRC, take a look at this and any comments, feedback?
PRC did look at it. Obviously, there were some concerns about consistency of, you know, starting the subdivision on both sides, you know, just for, you know, overall aesthetic look, and I've kind of printed out, you know, showing Mayor's Farms kind of down below and tying it in, and then, you know, what's there now. You know, obviously for consistency, to look. Um, you know, obviously, for consistency, to look the best, you know, PRC was supportive of doing all of it, but I think at the very least, if it is two-sided, you know, PRC would like to see, you know, the two-sided connection continue to Mayor Farms, just for that short little stub to finish it there. And then, obviously, you'd have to look at, you know, kinda some closure or returns, you know, where those sidewalks stub on, you know, the first lot is already in, do a return to the gutter, and then a cross on the other side, so it's logical, it doesn't just end up in a lawn, they can at least get back to the road.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. That's, yeah, that would be our intention.
And then, same over here, is another little stub back, and then a stub to this side, so you can cross over, and then, you know, two-sided, just to kinda that last little piece, just to finish it, you know, to the neck at, at Mayor's Farms. So, that was kinda PRC's fallback, is, you know, kinda has started out with two sides throughout, um, you know, but if the board was supportive of going with the one side internally, you know, to go with those, you know, kinda slight modifications to that, and, obviously, as I told John, don't spend a lot of money, just, you know, kinda sketch up what you're looking for.
Right on.
If the board is supportive of one side, you know, work with them to look at the, the details on how to finish that out, and to, you know, close out those onesie-twosie spots to finish that out.
All right. So, I question John to you, um, uh, do you owe us anything, anything outstanding, easements, uh, any of those types of things, or are we all pretty much caught up with things?
Well, we're all pretty much caught up. The only thing that we need to do, and we're anticipate, uh, the, uh, street, um, developer knocked out this one streetlight, uh, cut the, cut the, uh, wire. So, we're gonna put streetlights in now for that whole section, so we just wanted to do it all together, because we have to re-fix, we have to fix this one right up, right up front here, Tony.
Okay.
That's the only thing we did, but we, we got the other, um, things taken care of along the lines. So, when we put in all the streetlights now, we'll, we'll reconnect to that.
Okay. All, all easements in hand, Mark?
Yes.
No outstanding easements or anything like that?
No easements in hand, we're all seven-letter credit, we're working with them on, on development.
So, nothing, nothing outstanding from your end at this point?
Not currently, no.
Okay, good, good. All right, board, questions, comments?
Yeah, so, just, just a question, and, and maybe just a, a posing idea, because I-
Sure.
I certainly see the PRC comment about the continuity within the neighborhood. Um, so my, my initial reaction is that it would only make sense to have sidewalks continue as originally designed, but, if, if we were to have the sidewalks, it's on both, both sides of the street through the yellow here, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so if you have, if you continue it down to the connection here, both sides, and then run in, inside here, maybe you'd have it on, is it on both sides in this one?
It is.
Okay.
Not all completed yet, but it is.
Okay. So, then, it sounds as if maybe the only thing that would look out of place is this one stub right there.
Yeah, we just plant, yeah, like I said, if we could cut it back to the street, but-
I was gonna ask you, how hard is it to just remove it on that one side of the road?
Um, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's been in place in front of that, that owner's house. I don't know if we wanna do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I'd rather just cut it and then take it down, but, I mean, this is, you know, it's a big cost. It's like, it's close to $3,500 a lot, and we are doing it on the street, and people do have connectivity, and it is on one side, and, you know, Silverwoods, Rosewood, they don't even have any. And then, the new developments, like Ryan's out here, they're one, everybody's got one side of the street. So, again, we try to, you know, save some dollars in this economy that we're dealing with as well.
Well, are you good with what Mark was saying, the PRC was speaking of?
Of doing this, this, the connection here?
It's not a problem.
Yeah, we'd have, okay, doing that.
Was, was the, the two-sided, back in the day, I know that there's been several homoramas in this area, would, did the two-sided sidewalks that have any value to the, the homorama, was it sort of predicated on the original homorama being there, that there was sidewalks on both sides of the street? I mean, and just-
Not really.
No.
Okay, so the- Because we do, we do, um, I'll be honest with you, we do the sidewalk when we finish the house, each house, because we don't put it all in, because it cracks with all the, the construction vehicles. So, we've been doing house to house. So, at the homoramas, where we have one house, and then two lots free, then another house, Rick Herman puts his tents in between, the people walk on the street and go to the next house. So, we haven't had that to be any issue. And this really came up, like I said, I mean, I mean, you know, we're in there all the time, and, you know, everybody's walking their dog in the street, and everybody's running in the street, and it's like they're not using both sides of the street. So, let's give them one side at least, which gives them connectivity, and then, you know, that would be our, our, our hope here.
Okay. Um, other questions, board?
Well, I, I would just say that I, I think, I think that right now, I'm in favor of the sidewalks on both sides of the street, but I think maybe in fairness to the applicant, we don't have two board members here-
Yep.
-that may see it differently, so I would suggest tabling this.
You can make that as a motion.
All right.
We can, we can proceed. Uh, you've run the risk of, uh, being denied, uh, because, uh, because of lack of quorum. Uh, so if it's a, you know, if it comes, so-
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we-
Table it to the next work session.
Table it to the next work session.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to table. Uh, I'd ask, uh, Mark, uh, maybe we just make sure that both Paula and, uh, Andy have an opportunity to, uh, just, uh, come up to speed, uh, on that, that item, and we plan to bring it, uh, on the 14th.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll table, we'll table it until the 14th.
Okay.
All right. So, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, uh, staff, any additional comments that the board should be aware of? Uh, John, John, anything, uh, that the board should be aware of that you haven't put into the record already?
No, I'm fine.
All right. And, uh, those in favor to table until the 14th, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this will be held until, uh, the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Right on.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, we will, uh, move on to, um, our first action item, it's the community center roof replacement, 2018, and, uh, we've got, uh, Mr. Tate, uh, Director of Public Works, ACE Traffic Director, uh, for Bond Votes, and, uh, a little bit of everything else that he does.
Thank you guys long. Thank you. So, a few weeks ago, um, we put a resolution in to kinda seek bids, uh, for the community center roof, um, at least a portion of it, particularly a 6,500 square foot section, uh, that kind of, uh, is above the cafeteria, kitchen, um, loading dock hallway area, uh, for that portion of the building. Um, we did receive, uh, kind of two bids, um, at the bid opening. Um, you know, as you'll see, we kinda did the, the bid in a two-part, um, you know, a bare minimum, uh, kinda 60 mil roof with a 20-year warranty, um, and the installation associated, and then, the option to kinda upcharge to a better quality 75 mil roof with a 25-year warranty. Given the, kind of, age of the building, and the fact that they're as pricey as they are, uh, if we can get a little better quality and, and make it last, um, for a minimal increase, it may be worth it. And then, you'll kinda see how the, the two added together, um, if we wanted to go with that better roof, um, and the associated numbers. Um, of the two bidders that, um, supplied us with numbers, um, J&amp;B Installations was the low bidder, um, both if we wanted to do, uh, the 20, or the 60 mil roof, um, or if we wanted the upgraded 75. Um, and they were actually the same contractor that won the bid and did the work, uh, for the maintenance garage roof renovation in 2005, or 2015, um, over on Highway Garage. And, since then, there's been no issues with the, the quality of their work, or anything they've, you know, done for it. It's keeping everyone dry, um, seems to be holding up great, so. And they've done work for the town before, um, and they were actually also the only bidder that came out to, we had, uh, pre-bid meetings, so that any interested parties could inspect the condition of the roof, to see kinda what the rooftop units looked like, the roof drains, the slope, um, kinda the rough size, and how they may be able to get to it. They were the only person to show up for that. Um, and while they were on site, they actually took a sample of the, they cut into the roof material, took a sample to inspect the tech and deck below, kinda make sure that they didn't have any, uh, issues, you know, going into it, um, and made all the, kinda necessary patches and, and repairs to seal it back up, um, you know, while we were on site, and to our approval, um, for the meantime. So, they kinda know what they're getting into.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that, that sounds, sounds good. So, I guess the question is, in your, um, what's your recommendation on the 75 versus the 60? I mean, or Tony, I mean, do you have a preference?
I mean, roofs are, uh, certainly expensive, no matter what way you go. Um, given the, kind of, amount of roofing that we have, you know, between the community center, um, our DPW building, um, you know, it's a lot of money to kinda spend, and if we can spend a little bit more and make it last longer, uh, I think it'd certainly be worthwhile.
Okay. So, I think, uh, there's some brief discussions that Derek and I've had, um, as he mentioned, the incremental amount, um, uh, good, good insurance, uh, for that, and, um, uh, he's, he's comfortable recommending to the board that we proceed with that, uh, figure, which would take that, uh, that roof replacement, uh, to a total of 90,500. Still, well within, uh, budget, uh, that we have for that.
Well, you're really at that point paying $1,500 more for a five-year warranty.
Yeah, it's less than.
What, what, um, what mechanicals on the roof need to be moved? Is there anything-
Nothing needs to be moved.
So, it's all just flat top up there for the most part?
There's, there's three, um, rooftop units.
Okay.
And, two roof drains, maybe three. There was some snow and ice on the roof at the time, and drifting, so we weren't sure if there was a, a third or not. Um, and then, I believe, one vent. So, I mean, all of that, they cut right around, um, flash and seal up, and they were, they were comfortable with everything.
That sounds fine to me. I, I'll make a motion to, to move with the, um-
J&amp;B?
J&amp;B for the 75 mil upcharge.
Okay. Moved, uh, seconded, uh, further discussion, board, or staff?
Is this a summertime this year project? Is that the intent?
Yep. They said they'd be ready to go as soon as the, kinda, weather warms up.
What's wrong with today? Today's great. Uh, tomorrow, not.
Friday.
It may take more than one day.
A little bit sort of a Friday.
All right, very good.
So, all right. Thank you. Oh, I, I apologize. Uh, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, carries three out. All right, uh, Mr. Tate, thank you. Um, you're welcome to join us. Uh, we also know that, uh, you had a rather lengthy, uh, day yesterday as well, so we can, uh, kick you loose, if you like. And, uh, Mr. Mark Valentine said he'll handle anything that comes up from the DPW segment. All right, uh, we'll move on to our second item, Starbucks relocation to 1798 Pembroke Road. Mr. Castello, uh, the team of Luis Rubirio and Company, uh, welcome to join us at the table. And, uh, this is a carryover from, I believe, uh, the January 17th, uh, discussion, and, uh, at the request of the applicant, that we pushed to this evening, so that we would have all the right people around, uh, around the table. So, Mr. Castello, any additional words of wisdom for the, for the board?
No, I have been in contact with Mr. Rock on certain locations since then, uh, indicated the board's concern, which was very evident, uh, for a drive-through, uh, in the progress of the building. And, uh, he has been working with Mr. Rubirio to hopefully be able to alter that. And I know you were-
We'll see tonight.
-looking forward to the board tonight.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us back here. I was on time for the first meeting. So-
First meeting of the last month.
So-
Thank you, sir.
What we have here, um-
Why are we looking at Royal Car Wash? What the heck?
Well, we're not proposing a car wash, but what I wanted to show was that, so, I think we can accommodate the building close to the road without any asphalt whatsoever, which would be consistent with what's there now. The reason for the car wash image is to show that directly behind that wall is actually a drive-through lane. Um, so what we're proposing is that the building, rather, so we would extend the building to the front, and just create a very similar tunnel approach. So, from the street, it would look no different than that building. Now, it doesn't have to be brick, it could be, you know, consistent with what's there. But, the, the point of that image is to just show that there is a drive-through lane right behind that wall, and you would never know it. And, I think we can accommodate the exact same thing here. So, we would just extend the building, if you could picture, the building going over the drive-through lane, and just the cars cutting through the building.
I'm still trying to visualize it. You know, the one concern we have, we, I think we all agree on, was that we wanted to see the, um, drive-through in the back.
That's what we're doing.
And, and so, like, if you're walking down the sidewalk, you can walk into Starbucks as opposed to having to walk down and around through the parking lot to get to it.
Yeah, so, that actually creates, so, having lived with that right next door, uh, as a Dunkin' operator, I, I would say it's not the safest scenario. Um, you know, we have cars and people walking through the drive-through lane constantly. We've had many close hits, we've had people hit. So, um, I, I would shy away from that. I think this is a much safer scenario. You know, you have safe pedestrian traffic to the front door. We can still create a sidewalk, which crosses over, but it's a lot less having, you know, 10 people a day walking than hundreds of people walking through a drive-through lane. Again, as an owner-operator, it's not the best case scenario.
Man, I think it's a matter of safety.
Right.
You just, you just know, you know the traffic in Starbucks right now, the way they come in, you know, expectations.
So, I, I guess, what's the concern, Linda, like that?
Oh, that, that I just want, you don't wanna have a road, you don't wanna be on the sidewalk and have to go cross a road to get into the Starbucks.
Right, but, so, I, I think there's less pedestrian traffic going across the drive-through lane than there would be people crossing. So, if this was a horseshoe drive-through, you would have literally hundreds of people crossing the drive-through lane, where pedestrian traffic now would be a lot less than people parking. So, uh, and I experienced that myself. So, there, there's a lot less pedestrian people coming in from the sidewalks of the Dunkin' location than there are cars parked coming into Dunkin'.
Okay, so, if you, so, as a Dunkin' Donuts person, if you had to do it over again, would you change the, the way?
I absolutely would. I absolutely would. Yeah, so it is my least safest drive-through of all my locations, because there's non-stop people walking in front of the drive-through lane. So, anytime you wanna avoid that, I think it's safer.
Yeah, you know, the one thing about that whole area, when we, when we approved it, we talked about connectivity, you know, how we can do pedestrians, they can walk to the Dunkin' Donuts, and the, the Donuts over, you know, the whole area, I just, I, it's still not really came to, um, adequate, I don't think, uh-
Yes.
-industrial-friendly, because it still is a big parking lot with some road through it.
Right.
You don't wanna exacerbate the situation. Anything we can do to make it more safe, what it is, is there?
Sure. And I think that's what we're proposing here, so is, so in my opinion, this is the safest, both for pedestrian and patrons. So, there's less crossing of a drive-through lane coming in.
So, Luis, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind coming down on this end and maybe just sketching on this, I think, uh, you know, Rob and I just wanna make sure that we understand, you know, what, what your, what's your thought and what-
Yeah, so, if you can picture this, right? Now, this would obviously be grass, so this would be 441. Uh, the building, you know, picture the building going back. So, this is the building. So, we would extend the building, now, we would redesign the site, but the building would come forward. would come forward. So it would be one continuous building, almost like a carport going through. And, you know, the cars would come in. From the street, it would, the front of this would look just like this.
Look like this.
Yeah, so obviously, we achieve the no asphalt.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking, like this. So that the cars still come down through and, again, buffered from, for the most part, buffered on this end here. But, you know, it ends up, like you say, more of a carport, if you will. Looks like the building, but ends up being more of a carport type of design.
Yeah, like a dank design. I mean, so, I mean, and this exists in the marketplace today. So I have two stores very similar to this, one up in Webster, Old Road, and then...
The Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. So.
So where is it, in Webster?
It's the gas station, Webster, right at 104 Old Road.
North of 104.
Yeah.
Just now you're talking to the H station, go around the back and then kind of come through the...
Yeah, it's not available. But, so if you could picture that, I mean, it's not the same.
Let's try to visualize.
But.
So when we discussed this on 17.
Thank you, Louis.
You know, I was not in favor of the proposal at that time, the drive-through approaching the street. And I got to tell you, I'm disappointed. It's five weeks this has been tabled, and all we have is the same site layout with garage in front. So the connectivity portion that Linda was talking about, the pedestrian-friendly, there's no other site in the four corners that would have a drive-through or cars approaching the front of a building in the opposite direction of a four-lane highway with lights. I mean, you can't put any amount of berms or fencing or walls or whatever there is. Not to even mention the traffic flow within the site, which is going to be problematic at best. I mean, I, I think Paula put it right when she said the last time that what we've seen is good for Starbucks, not for Penfield. I mean, I got to tell you, if this is all we're going to see is a drive-through that has not moved in five weeks, then there's no way I'm ever going to support this design layout. And I am prepared to kill this tonight unless one of you two.
No, we can't.
Postpone this, so.
Well, I wouldn't kill it tonight.
Okay.
Regardless, because we need the other two.
So, I'm sorry, I don't know your name?
Rob.
Rob. So I think we're making an effort to accommodate the town's concern of the asphalt in front of the building. So that's...
Well, that's just one of the concerns.
Correct. So, you know, we're taking steps. So that is our first step to considering that. The traffic, Starbucks is already there. So I don't know if the traffic being on the right side versus the left side.
I understand that. But the Starbucks being there is not going to be an argument that I want to hear, because it's there. It doesn't have a drive-through. It's been there for the longest time. Before that, the site was there as a friendlies, and before that, so what, what we have here is no different than what we looked at and tabled. I didn't, I, I thought I made myself clear five weeks ago.
It's a little different.
It's different in the sense that they're going to put a wall up in front.
A larger, yeah, a larger length.
That's not different. That's just, you know, covering a blemish.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, this, this is not in the best interest of the pedestrian-friendly four corners that were striving very hard to, you know, put forth. And I don't even know what the building design is going to look like.
Yeah, what about landscaping? That's, that'd be a...
Yes. I mean, if we have support from the board, well, I mean, we can landscape all in front. So it will be grass area in front. We can build a berm to, you know, to screen the drive-through lane that is coming, you know, call it the west side of the property. So our, you know, our initiative today is to see if we could address, maybe not all the issues, but some of the issues. And that's what we're here for.
You know, when you talk about the landscape and stuff, Starbucks right now, they have the little area in the front, on the side, where they have little tables. Would you envision that too?
Yeah, so we would have...
Like a Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes. We would have a patio on the backside of it, right, which is the main entrance to, to the store.
Yeah, because the backside would be the one facing like Kung Wats and everything in the back.
Correct, correct. Yeah, because that's where the park is.
Yeah.
You know, um...
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a matter too, it's not what we're used to, because, you know, it's, it's creating a whole different dynamic of the business area by doing, by doing it. Because all of a sudden, you got ingress, egress coming in from the back and then going, it's, it's all, it's like four corners with a parking lot in between now. You see what I'm saying? It's a little awkward. It's, it's, um...
Well, it could be a side entrance.
I worry about what's in the middle, because it's just a big parking lot with, with road. And I'd like to see some connectivity or some, some kind of pedestrian. If we're going to do that, if we're going to have access from the back, we kind of have something, something to break it up.
One could argue that from a standpoint of pedestrian and connectivity in the four corners, a drive-through is certainly not in the best interest. Period.
True.
I mean, the current Starbucks works. People get out of their cars and go into a store.
Starbucks is going to a different route. They want to have their...
Well, they can find a different location. I'm a hard no. So it's...
And what, what about Jim, Mark, all you guys, when you took it down to PRC?
I, I got to tell you, I'm, I'm kind of where Rob is in terms of putting stuff out in front of that building the way it is. I, I was hoping as well that they would come up with a different design, possibly bringing the service to the back of the building and keeping it away from the front. That way you could bring them in, swing around the back, have them come down and come along the back and then get back out, keep this area green.
Right.
Possibly put a sidewalk, as Mark's kind of suggesting here, along the side of the property to keep, keep it pedestrian-friendly. But it is going to change the character of that area once you do it.
Jim, we can achieve all that. So we're not opposed to sidewalks along here. Just what, what we're opposed to is this horseshoe drive-through and customers walking in front of this horseshoe nonstop. I mean, you've got hundreds of...
Well, I, I go to your place there a lot. I've never had a single person, of all the years I've spent there, not stop for me when I walk into your door. Never.
There's a lot of very close calls, Jim. I mean, just telling you as an owner-operator...
You know more than I do. Your people are there every day. I mean, it's just... To me, I think this just adds a lot of traffic to an area. It's going to change the character of the four corners if we do what we've proposed. Unless the design of the building incorporates something that I can envision, which is totally possible.
So then we're against the drive-through. So is it that the town board doesn't want another drive-through in the area? Or is it that?
So, so I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, Louis, is that it's not so much the drive-through is where the drive-through is in that, in that area. So if you take a look at the Four Corners District and the way the Four Corners District was designed, the way that Four Corners developed, and then the way the Four Corners District was designed and the intent was to have more of a village feel. So you have your, you have your buildings, you have your parking in the back, and you have what I would call, other than your, your access in, your activity in the back and not, not in the front of the, of the building itself. And so I think that's what the original intent or design of the Four Corners District, now going back probably 15 years or thereabouts. And so I think that's the piece where some of the board members are struggling.
Okay, so I guess let me pose the question.
Sure.
If we do come up with a horseshoe drive-through, which I feel is unsafe.
I know.
But if the board agrees, would they support this concept with the building completely upfront? So very similar to the Dunkin' Donuts with a back drive-through and parking lot.
I like that.
Would the board support that as a drive-through location?
They'd be more than keeping what you have in mind already.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I like that better.
Again, I believe it's unsafe, but if that's what the board would prefer, then we can try and design that. You know, we wanted to make this attempt first, because I think this is a safer attempt. But, you know.
So, so the only thing, and so many people around the table have heard me say a lot, but I always get concerned when you have folks putting pen to paper, designing, you know. So what I would encourage you, encourage you as you look at it, do it in a cost-effective way. Because I'm not, I'm not looking to have engineers spend your money, you know, just willy-nilly either. So I'm very, I get very concerned about that. But enough of a sketch so that, you know, again, the board would take a look at it. Sounds like we have some board members that, you know, might support or more support that. I think we have some board members that are willing to at least take a look at it, you know, to vet it out. What I'm, what I'm sensing is, is that the current layout, the current design probably will not garner support, enough votes to support that effort.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm willing to ask for the board to table and then give you an opportunity, you know, either at the 14th or the 28th, or whenever you feel you're ready, to come back and have a broader conversation if that will work.
Yeah, we appreciate it. I mean, and again, we apologize for this design, for, you know, not being more formal. But to your point, we didn't want to go spend a ton of money. I know Rob's disappointed, but that was the process, was just...
Louis, how many, how many parking spaces do you ideally need to have for the site? For your staff or the public? I know you're trying to get more people driving through than you are coming in now, but how many do you really need? And do you have enough here?
We do. So what happens with drive-throughs? So 70% of the business when you have a drive-through goes through the drive-through. So, you know, I don't dictate that. You know, I spend a million dollars building a store. I want people to come inside. But, you know...
Here's what it is.
The, the people of the town of Penfield want drive-throughs, just like all the other towns, you know. I don't, I want them to come inside my store. That's why I build them.
But you know, you think about, I mean, you don't just, I mean, I go to both, right? So, so if you go into Starbucks, there's always packed people sitting.
Correct.
And Dunkin' Donuts, not so much. They're getting their coffee and going. And that might be the same that happens with Starbucks most days.
Yeah, so a lot of that will change with the drive-through. So, you know, if we, if we don't have a drive-through, then there's more sit-down traffic. It doesn't add traffic per se. It just diverts the amount of people that come in.
Exactly.
Versus takeout.
So I'm just getting what his parking spot.
Right. So drive-throughs actually allow you to have less parking, because there'll be less people physically parking, sitting, going in, grabbing the coffee, coming back out and leaving.
Well, would they have the same amount of seating as, as now?
I don't know. Probably very similar, yeah.
The square footage, if I recall, without checking my notes, Louis, the square footage of this new building is less than the square footage of the current building. Do I recall that correctly?
Yeah, I think they, we were proposing around 2,000 square feet, and they might be closer to 3,000.
Yeah, I just recall that it was a smaller, seemed to be a smaller building, smaller footprint, smaller square footage.
I mean, they inherited that building from friends.
Sure.
That wouldn't be their ideal building if they were building from, from scratch.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
All right, I will, I will table the application to the next meeting. Can you do the next one?
We could try if not, you know, we'll...
So I would just ask, yeah, working with, working with Jim, whether we do it on the 14th or the 28th, so.
To a future meeting.
Yeah, so, you know, now we got to go back to Starbucks and, you know, that might take some time. So if it's not the next meeting, we'll, we'll be next on the agenda.
Yeah, let's table it.
Okay. Second from Andy or Rob?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second. And I, I apologize for, for being late. I had to step out for a second. Certainly, you know, some type of a drive-through in the back, I certainly would be much more supportive of that. I, I want to see the concept and how you put it together, Louis. But I would be fine with a, a drive-through in the back portion of this, depending on how it's laid out.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Okay, so the matter is tabled. Then I just ask Louis to work with Jim, whatever works best with your, schedule with your team.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We'll move on to sign permit for tailor shop. This is 2118 Five Mile Line Road.
I did. I sent you a picture of what he's proposing. This is a reference also. They go on the front and the side of the building. Those up inside boxes. I have talked to he and his family. They fully understand that the tailor sign would come off the railing once they get some identification up on the building. The historic preservation board also has to review this. It's in the district. They will be reviewing this on the 8th of March. And certainly I will get back to you with whatever they come up with after that.
No, I'm fine.
I'd just like to feel if you like it or if you're concerned by it in any way. It seems like it's tasteful and...
Yeah. It's kind of bright right now and what they've just put up.
Well, I did have a discussion with them. They had several signs outside the door.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can tell if you have to re-sign. They gave it immediately.
No, I'm fine with it. Do you want a motion to...
If, if you're ready to do it, if you want to.
Well, upon the historic preservation.
Subject to their...
Yeah, that'd definitely be subject to, to historic preservation. So, okay, so...
I can move that to, that we approve at a time.
I'll second that. Thanks, Rob. Okay, so it's been, it's been moved and seconded for the sign that was proposed, which is tailor and dry cleaners. And again, they're looking to do signs on both Penfield Road and Five Mile Line Road.
That's right.
And so again, the condition being historic preservation board approval. So if that, something happens there, certainly the board will want to re-review.
Right.
And then the other item is, is that the, I think the last sign that's there be, be removed. And then the normal sign permits, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. No seeing no further discussion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. So, 4-0. Okay, that takes us down to Mr. Valentine, who's been extremely quiet tonight as compared to other meetings. Informal item, it's the 2018 CDBG application slash the seeker component of that.
Try to keep the ruckus to a minimum while working with them.
We appreciate that. Thank you. It's about time.
Sent off to the board, the CDBJ application that we had to file previously. Basically, this is kind of a run-through with the board. I've been working with the supervisor to show some improvements in the Willow Pond area, some Willow Pond Way neighborhood. There are some designated, kind of the front of what you got is the actual application. You go in a few pages and you kind of run across this yellow white net. This shows the low mod area, so load of moderate income areas and the areas that you can. There's three spots within Penfield that you can show infrastructure improvements in. As this board knows, we've done a lot of sidewalks in Empire Boulevard, done a lot of improvements in that area recently. And then this new area has popped up recently behind kind of the Wegmans southwest corner of 250 and 441. So Willow Pond Way and stuff in there. So we wanted to take this year's opportunity to look at doing some improvements in there. Eric and his crew already done some crosswalks, some handicap ramps. So kind of jumping off of that is looking at that connection over to Wegmans. There's a walkway that's in there. It is not handicap accessible on the north side. It kind of goes from sidewalk, gets curbed. It's not. It is private property, so we're kind of going to leave their side alone. So we're looking at going on the south side of, of that driveway and then running a new piece across that. So go on Crown Oak, and then as we go to the next page, that's the piece they have here. It's only about three to four feet wide. This section has no sidewalk. These have curbs. So rather than trying to retrofit this up against the apartment buildings, we're looking at, you know, putting a new connection in here. And then this is the connection that goes right to the Wegmans Cafe on the side.
So whose property is that?
Um, it's a mix between the HOA and as well as the apartments kind of on, on the end. Should we get the grant money and everything else, we'll approach them and, you know, obviously have to work with them.
But you've talked to them that you want to do this, no?
Um, not yet. We just want to make sure the board's comfortable with everything before we get too far ahead of ourselves and make sure we're, you know, have everything in place.
There's a lot of older people and so on. They go to Wegmans and they live in those apartments.
There's a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic that goes through there. There's a lot of people that may not have vehicles, so having, you know, pedestrian congestion.
Do they need scooters and stuff?
Back and forth.
They need safe, healthy.
And then the other piece we're looking at is on Sanders Farm with the Shaw's have been in. We had them install sidewalks right off of Penfield Road. We're looking to continue that down Sanders Farm down to Willow Pond Way so that, you know, as neighbors are walking or walking the dog. Sanders Farm has become a busier entry-exit than off of Penfield Road to give them a safe location for pedestrians to be on that area. So we've kind of gone through, this is, you know, the application, showed some pictures as part of that. This kind of shows an overall concept of, of the connections. A lot of Willow Pond Way has sidewalks already. All the way down the main entrance has it. So these are kind of some supplemental portions to that. Obviously, we have to do the seeker component. And then ultimately, the town, excuse me, the county is looking for a formal acceptance from the town board in a resolution form. So just going back, we've, you know, begun the seeker part of it. Want to make sure that the town board was okay with that. Make sure you're in agreement with, you know, an unlisted action. Looked at it. There's no environmental issues in the area. There's no wetlands. There's no floodplains or anything else.
No surprises.
No surprises in the area. So just making sure the board is comfortable with this. And then we've moved to put a resolution in for the next meeting.
Sounds good. Preferable?
I like it.
Okay. Motion to direct Mark to put resolution in and to move forward with that.
Move second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the agenda. And there being no further business to come before the board, the February 28, 2018 work session, a meeting will stand adjourned at 7:51. Yeah.